Okay, so I recall the meeting on some one schools to order the summer of ten twenty twenty four. Please join me in a prepared. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. In accordance with Massachusetts, I remind everyone that the meeting is being recorded. If any member of the public would like to make an audio or video recording of the meeting, please notify me by raising your hand in person or remote and sweet name or purpose for the party. Okay, great. Thank you. We're gonna start out with a.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
Uh, could you promote my fan?
Oh, yeah.
There it is.
My fan.
Good. While we're getting Mike Terry, would you mind giving the walkout round announcement for us tonight?
Sure. Now, my public schools acknowledge just that we are gathering on the unseamance ancestral land of the Wapahno Nation. We recognize and respect, respect the Wapahno people, including those of Sapanessa who were quite superwist and chatty as original stewards of what is now known as the town of Falmouth and honor their enduring relationship with this land. This land acknowledgement is an intentional act to counter the erasure of indigenous people and to demonstrate respect for their sovereign rights. We are committed to educating ourselves and our students about the longstanding history of the Wapahno people. In alignment with the core values of Falmouth Public Schools, we pledge to build an ongoing partnership with the Wapahno Nation.
Thank you so much. Um, I'll start off with our mission and vision. The Falmouth Public Schools creates world-class student learning experiences. Our Clippers are empowered to pursue their goals with curiosity, integrity, and resiliency. And our vision is that Clippers are creative, explicitive, and engaged learners who participate in their community as socially responsible citizens. Clippers effectively communicate and solve problems that impact the world around them. Thank you. Um, so we're excited to have Isabel Grayson here with us, our student advisor for at least today. We are having a student advisor join us. And so if you don't mind sharing some, some stuff that's going on at the high school or maybe a little bit about you or what you're interested in, anything to let share.
Yeah, of course. Thank you for having me. Um, a few highlights from the high school that I wanted to bring up was tonight, actually, is um, the specialty program trophies. So at the high school, the eighth graders are walking around and they, um, it's really what APHS has to offer. So it's, um, the audit courses they can take next year and arts and then the career paths, um, that are provided. And then along with that tomorrow, they're doing tours. Um, I'm actually one of the tour guides. And during Clipper time in the morning, the eighth graders will come from Lawrence and they will be shown around the school by student leaders and then some of the teachers and the career paths programs will explain a little bit about what their class teaches and what they can expect. And then fall sports just wrapped up and we had a very successful, um, awards night. So that was good to see. And then winter sports is starting and we're off to a great start, especially with hockey. Boys and girls are ranked one and two in the league for preseason. So I'm pretty excited to see it. It was a great season. And then actually probably a few weeks ago now, the theater department had their fall play, which was Murder on the Orient Express. And I went with my friends and it was really good. I was beyond like surprised. Um, and then student government also met today and we worked and just continuously worked to prove the best for our abilities. And one project we're doing and focusing on is to reform and better the cafeteria as it's the space where students have to hang out with their friends, really not academic. And this is what new, or one of the ideas we had is like the new tables and chairs. So hopefully the high tops and then different sized tables because, um, daily students like push together lots of chairs and it's kind of crowded. So if we can change that, that would be interesting. I love that idea. Yeah.
Uh, any questions for Isabel about the goings on at the high school? Did you get to do a tour, um, similar to what you're reading and what did you think of it?
I did. Um, I actually knew our toy, our tour guide. So that was the nice. She really did a good job explaining and the teachers you get to meet too. So you can have kind of a preview for next year. I thought it was really inspirational.
That's great. Well, thank you for offering to leave that tomorrow. Uh, you are very welcome to stay and hang out, but if you have other obligations, we totally understand. And we really appreciate you taking time to be with us and to listen to your perspective. Thank you. Uh, we'll move on to public comment. Members of the public are welcome to speak about items not on the agenda. Comments should be limited to two minutes of length. Under the open meeting law, the committee cannot act on public comment items. For items on the agenda, the chairman accepts comments from the public following the committee's discussion and additional comments and feedback can always be notified email to schoolcommittee@falmouth.k12.m a.us. And as we've been doing recently, there's no objection. I'd like to welcome public comment on, um, the renovation Lawrence since it's relevant and. That's okay. All right. Do you have anyone that can pull a comment? Okay. Can we promote Amanda so you can hear her? Hi Amanda, can you hear us?
Hi, I can.
Hi, go ahead.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, firstly, thank you all for your time and efforts in listening to the community voices over the course of the last several meetings. Um, obviously you've heard passionate input from parents and staff and community members who care so deeply about the future of Falmouth Public Schools. And I'm on here tonight just kind of asking all of you as we head into the new year to kind of take a step back and reassess the district's current needs in light of the feedback that you've received and kind of the findings that have surfaced as a result of all of this work that both you and the community has done. Over the last few meetings, we've heard loud and clear that something isn't right. Uh, parents are desperate for our concerns to be heard. Daycare providers have raised serious objections. Teachers who we trust to be on the front lines of our kids' development have expressed firm opposition to the proposals at hand. Um, and yet, when given the opportunity to rescind the course that we're currently on in favor of reflection, only four of our committee member, committee members voted to pause. The other five chose kind of the status quo. And so I ask you, you know, what message does this send to the students, parents, or staff of this district? Like some of these votes came from members who stated that their priority is and has always been the best interest of our students. But I don't know how that claim can hold truth when parents sat before you, some of them in tears, pouring their hearts out about their, their kids' current struggles under the status quo. And these are not abstract concerns. They're immediate real issues impacting families across our district. And so, you know, that being said, I want to acknowledge all the work that all of the parents and teachers and, and school committee members are doing. Despite all of these conditions, you know, the dedication can't go unnoticed. But as we continue to focus, um, over the next, or so, oh, sorry.
Yeah, you can just finish your thought. That's what.
Yeah. Um, as we continue to kind of focus on the three issues that were presented to us, what we're trying to solve for the aging school buildings, the need for pre-K and declining enrollment, they're all valid. Um, but just ask ourselves like, are they the most urgent problems impacting our current students today? Are there larger issues that we should be looking at? And, um, I hope everyone has a wonderful holiday and, and thank you for letting me share.
Thank you, Amanda. You have a wonderful holiday too. Thanks. All right, um, more students. We are so lucky to have students from the ASLP program joining us tonight to share about their experience. Um, would you guys like to come up to the table? So I'd like to introduce Dylan, Kenny, Al Campbell, Lucas Bushi, and Sheldon Mack. Hi, come on up to the, uh, you can just pull another, a couple more chairs so you have enough spots to sit. That way the camera will pick you up. Thank you so much for coming. Um, we love to hear from students about their experiences and we'd love to share something with us about ASLP and maybe even start from scratch because some people probably don't know what it is. Who wants to go?
Hi, I'm Lucas Bushi. Um, and basically ASLP stands for Advanced Studies Leadership Program. Um, so how you get selected for it is on your NCAS scores, teacher recommendations, grades, and interest in STEM. So what the, um, program entails, it is a two-week program at Mass Maritime Academy in Borneo where students will stay there and get to just experience their college life, classes that they can take in college, and interest in STEM courses while also making friends and making memories that last forever.
You should be on the brochure. Really well said. Um, does anyone else want to share anything about what it was like or something that you liked about it?
Yes, because I have something to, that, to ask them.
Please.
So I went because, um, I, 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 it's so, so great that Mass Maritime offers this program. The one thing I saw in addition to you doing really academic work was some fun projects that you learned. And one was in the swimming pool. Well, do you remember that project? Okay, why don't you tell us about that project?
Um, Dylan, Kenny, and, um, this past year, we do things, both years I was there, we, we did a thing where we built cardboard boats.
Right.
You're split into pods and you have care counselors and you do a bunch of fun stuff with them. But the main, like the big main event is like the boat race. So you spend most like, most of the two weeks with your pod. And like you spend like the afternoon with the pod and you're like building the boats with them. And the last year that the dispatch year that I did it, uh, we built a really sturdy boat. We actually won the race.
Wow, yay.
There's this thing where you have pod points where you get like points for like good stuff that people in your pod do or like, so like just like holding the door for people or just like selling it like a certain subject or teaching or like the, there are teachers there that recommend stuff like that. So it's kind of like, it's kind of like the teacher recommendations that get you there, but there's ones inside the camp that give you pod points. So, and then if you guys, whoever wins the boat race gets a bunch of pod points. So I remember my team was in last place for the pod points, but we won the race and then we ended up winning it too. We ended up winning the entire pod cup because of that race, which is really nice.
Could you tell exactly what two, don't you have two materials to build your road out of?
Yeah, you got cardboard and you have tape and that's about it. You've got a limited amount of cardboard and a limited, limited amount of tape. You have two rowers for your boat and then they just have to try and do their best. And also every single year, like the head people for the group also build their own boat and they have to race in that. It's really fun.
So I was thinking like build a boat, but you're saying you like build a boat?
No, like you're helping us this boat. You build a boat making up for two people, basically.
Wow, out of cardboard in a swimming pool.
Yes, and I was imagining like a little boat, like the car races. Yes, yeah.
No, no, there are actual people in the boat, rowing the boat. You do get like a big piece of cardboard, but you have to use it wisely.
That's great. Yeah.
It's, it's really fun to watch and you also get coin spacing on how well your pod is cheering all the other teams. Like we're all in that bleacher area. It's really loud and it's. But it's really fun to cheer on your team and see what every team is doing. It's, it's really, it's really good experience.
Did any of you put out, do they still do the big suit where you then, you put on the big suit and jump in the water? Did anybody do that? You did that too. Did you do it?
So what, so talk to us about the big suit because I'm sure there's a lot of people around here that doesn't know what that means.
So in Mass Maritime, it's around the ocean. They really do focus on like ocean, like stuff. So, um, when they go on a ship into cold areas like the Arctic, they have to be ready for emergency suits. So they have these emergency suits that they get into and then if they go into the water, it keeps them floating and warm. So we did that, but, um, we did it like in the select dock area where we got into the suits with like half of our pod and we haven't calculated. And then we just swim around and we learn how like, because there's, um, this thing where like if somewhere, if there's like not a suit that's like fit for someone, then everyone can like put their feet together and can make like a little raft for them.
That's, huh, that's really cool. So you don't, if someone's without one, you can still keep them afloat. So what's the interaction with the cadets? Like do you, if someone talked about like, I mean, so do they help lead the activities? Do, you know, or is it completely separate? Let's share a little bit about.
Yeah, sure. So, um, yeah, so there are students at Mass Maritime and it's definitely like, they have an authoritative role because they're trying to like reflect, um, their life at Mass Maritime as well as like teaching us. So I remember we did like, we practiced marching with them and they just showed us what their life was like as cadets. But, um, I think that it was also important how they made such like good bonds and connections with the students as like we work together in our groups or, um, they were also assistant teachers in some of the STEM classes that we would take. So it was really fun, um, building connections with them and also being able to just see what their life was like at college.
Yeah, thank you. Is it any, the kids from all over the state in all grades or is it junior or senior or freshman, is it all four grades? And like from everybody?
I think it's just, uh, some of them.
Yeah.
Falmouth has the most people usually. We just, we just do. Because any extras from other towns, we go, we scoop a lot.
Terry, I have one question. Um, is this a collaboration with the Cape Cod Collaborative? Or is it sponsored by the Cape Cod Collaborative, but is that Mass Maritime?
It's sponsored by the cake. It's, they, they're together.
Okay.
Okay, but it's, it's an initiative of the collaborative. Yeah.
Well, I'd have to.
About twenty years, it's been going on about twenty years. Yeah.
I'm sorry. No, it's all right. I didn't mean to interrupt. Um, I'd just like to give a shout out for all four of these students because, um, it's not just that you're interested to get to go. It also is, um, your grades, um, your NCAS scores, um, and then teacher recommendations, um, to get to go. So obviously you have to show interest, right? And, uh, in the STEM because there's a lot of, um, projects that do take place. But, um, so definitely these are, um, uh, good students that, that deserve to go and have one scholarship winner sitting amongst us. So Sheldon, um, was awarded a scholarship. So, uh, we had, I think, four total. From, yes, so, uh, we had four total out of, uh, I think this past summer, I'm sure. So can you say what that means? Yeah. Can you say what the, maybe Sheldon's scholarship means? Is it, it's?
I think it was just some money to go to the colleges and some students.
You go to Mass Maritime, yeah?
Oh, man.
But, um, yeah, so if, uh, out of the senior year, you know, if that's, if that's the choice, then. Since it's kind of nice that, you know, in some of the nature, it could be important. Yeah, and if nothing else, you can write about this experience when you apply to colleges. So. Any other questions?
Yeah, I'm commenting because.
No, please.
Because I always.
It was your idea.
There were a hundred and seventy-eight students, so it's very remarkable. You guys got the scholarship, but you got that scholarship, so congratulations. Because that's how many were there this summer. So, anyway. So it's more all, I like, you know, the collaborative system program.
Yeah, so we.
It's, it's an amazing program.
Uh, just a quick, uh, what was the highlight for each of you? What was the highlight of the two weeks, uh, that you were kind of most excited about?
Um, my favorite thing was this past year, my pod was really interested in kickball. So you know, it wasn't like a set thing. Our pod like made every single other pod do an entirely pod kickball thing where, and we, like, we played every single pod and we beat almost every single pod. Except for one, but that was because we played on like a bigger field that we weren't used to. So we beat them afterwards.
That's great. Any other highlights?
Yeah, um, going back to what Dylan was talking about earlier about the boat race. I was one of the rowers in the boats, so that was definitely my best experience there. It was really fun to look forward to as like we built the boats.
Yeah, so I'll make it.
And the, uh, so they had a couple of, uh, you know, like special guests come. They had a magician, uh, and a pilot. A lot of people, I think, also happened to actually be in the program. Not in the program, but like working, uh, with the kids in the program. Uh, so they had a guy who talked about Sasquatch and, uh, it was, it was pretty good. It was informative, I guess, if you're a people, Sasquatch information. Yeah, that was.
Just some of the guests.
Yeah.
Yeah.
My favorite part was probably meeting people from other towns. It was really fun because you didn't really, and we saw on school letters kind of like someone like completely.
I love that. That's really nice. My daughter's favorite part was mixing sodas together, which I think is disgusting. But it was the first time that it was ever a highlight, right? To just like kickball different flavors. I don't know what that says about me as a parent. Well, thank you all so much for coming and sharing about. And thank you to the parents. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. We so appreciate it. Love you from the guests. Thank you so much.
Thank you guys.
Thank you, Terry, for the suggestion. It's a great idea. Great to help them. All right, next up we have discuss and possibly act on submitting a letter of interest to MSBA for the renovation of Lawrence. Then turn this over to you. So Paul and I are going to, um, share a little information, but we'll, we'll let Paul start. Okay, so Paul's a little back over there.
Basically, uh, uh, the option is to either school committee to just take this statement of interest, uh, which is essentially an application for funding, uh, the Lawrence School renovation. Um, and, uh, the application period will open up in early January and close down most likely, you know, mid-April, but the dates haven't been fully set yet. Um, but again, uh, they require, noted submit an application, they require a statement, which you see here, this is from their, uh, requirement, uh, documents. Um, and then, uh, they also require a similar vote from the, uh, from the board of selection.
So, um, so a little bit of, uh, just as a reminder, I'm sharing, um, from the, uh, feedback forums, um, those that have been positive, um, uh, with this particular proposed plan for the renovation of Lawrence. Um, we've had seventy-nine total, um, individuals write in that this is, um, what they want. We've only had five that had said, um, that they were not in favor of it. Uh, we have, um, the forums have been largely positive. And just recently I opened up a, um, survey for our, um, staff and, um, and one of the questions was about the Lawrence renovation. And so, um, the, it does not close till next Friday. So, uh, but we had to date, um, two hundred and twenty-three, um, individuals. Um, that's forty-seven percent, uh, have, um, completed the survey to date. Uh, ninety-four people said it was very important and sixty-one said that it was important. Um, so, um, you know, from that importance, um, those two categories, a hundred and fifty-five, um, has reported. Uh, and then we received the building needs task force recommendation, um, to move forward with the statement of interest, um, in the, yeah, for the, uh, renovation. Um, and so I just wanted to share, um, I just remind everyone that this seems to be, uh, a favorable proposed plan. And I'll turn it back over to Paul, um, so you can talk about what might, like, come forward.
Yeah, so essentially once the, uh, the, the application itself or the statement of interest isn't yet released, it will be released in the next few weeks. Uh, then we'll spend several months go through that, uh, along with the building assessment that will be done by Habib and Associates, which is an architectural firm. And, and their, their role is to walk through the building and judge where the specific needs are for renovation. Plumbing, for example, the electric, like, much of what we've talked about, uh, over the last few months, that, that, and they will highlight that, um, from an architectural and engineering. Um, and that study, uh, is done, uh, is funded by the town, the town decreed that, uh, uh, is part of their, uh, allocation that they had approved, uh, last year. So, um, that cost is incorporated in that. And, uh, so once that assessment, building assessment is done, that, uh, goes along with this app, the statement of interest in this is then followed in. So that begins the process. Uh, again, decisions by the MSBA, uh, don't come out till December. Uh, they likely contact us sometime in the late spring, um, and, uh, and tell us whether they want to come to the campus. So visit the campus, visit the school, uh, et cetera. And so.
So if they're interested, they will then do a site visit of some kind.
Yeah, I, I think they'll pretty much try to get to most of the applicants, my understanding. But they do do, you know, they definitely will do a site, site visit, my understanding.
So, um, my understanding of this, and correct me if I have any of it wrong, is that, that starting this process by signing, um, the letter or voting on the letter of interest would allow us to start that company doing their analysis of the building so that when the application opens, we actually have the material that we need to submit.
That's right.
Okay, and just as far as we know, um, everything is still, um, once we apply, we can always withdraw if the numbers don't look right or something changes. Is that still? Uh, are there questions from the committee?
Yeah, well, um, in that same thing, Helen, um, if, if we have a hesitation moving forward, what if we have a change in the, um, the planning on how many grades are going to be at the school?
We still can adjust that later on in the process.
Okay.
So that, no, this is the initial, and again, reason for us to indicate the three grades is that the MSBA sets aside a certain amount of capital.
Sure.
For this project and they want to know that ahead of time so they don't get short on, uh, on their capital plan.
Okay, also easier to go from three to two to two to three.
That's right.
Uh, because I was just under the, um, understanding that we've not, we collectively have not made a decision as where we're landing with grade structure. So that's correct. Uh, thank you for that repetition.
Here, so you said that the select may have to approve the same letter that we do?
That's right.
Okay, and when would they do that?
They would most likely do that in the chair whenever we can get onto their agenda.
Okay.
As soon as we would approve this tonight, but they would get onto their agenda and they have them approved in the store.
And would this ultimately then be mentioned during this upcoming town meeting? Or is that too early?
Um, it, I, you know, it may be discussed and we're likely to give a presentation. Uh, so I don't want to admit to it, uh, because we haven't even thought about the presentation. But, uh, but I, I would think that it, it, it would be a mention that we.
So we probably wouldn't know yet, right, whether we were accepted?
Yeah, we don't know.
No, we don't have them. Any other questions? Mike, can you bring it back to Tina? Um, I have, well, I've asked Paul and you about this, but I just wasn't sure if there was a problem with the wording. Uh, the Lawrence School represents, sorry, the last paragraph after seven, six, seven. Okay, the Lawrence School represents Falmouth Public Schools top priority for renovations, colon, and hereby further specifically acknowledges, who is hereby further specifically acknowledging? What else did that sentence?
Yeah, I think the, the.
You said you tried to read it right from the.
Yeah.
It seems like you should say Falmouth Public Schools hereby acknowledges. Hereby further specifically acknowledges. A lot of editors know that whole show.
We could just add that.
And, oh, it is.
And I don't have a colon, it's actually.
And so it is the exact, is it what they have?
Yeah, so weird. It doesn't make any sense. I think we're safe as we sit through the timeline.
Yeah, it is the exact.
But that's one of the things, they, they do want, they can't detect what they bring.
Oh, wait, it might be a semicolon.
Hold on, let me, if it's what they have.
It's a semicolon.
It is.
No, it's not.
No, it's a.
No, and here it is. In the document.
Oh.
Oh, so.
Okay.
But I had to blow it up to like two hundred percent to tell. Okay, so there's just one, some, one tweet.
Okay. Um, and then just commentary wise, I, I just went to my first town meeting, I was elected to town meeting when I was elected to school meeting. I still feel that we should do a feasibility study and get all the ducks in order because, I mean, personally, I want to make sure, because my children are three and six and they're going to be going through this, and I just want to make sure we're doing it right for them on a personal note, but also, um, for a town meeting, I don't want us to be in town meeting with a lot of questions down the road that we can't answer. But unless people have changed their mind and want to revisit last meeting's conversation, I'm not gonna hold up the process.
Mike, did you have any questions?
I had one question for Paul. Hey, Paul, the, the money for the architecture, actually, it's more than one question, but the money for the architecture firm, uh, is that already been procured? You might have said it, but I couldn't hear you so well.
Yes.
Yeah, it has, okay. And now, then my only follow-up question is that, once we do that and we submit, if we do have to make a change, does that have the, do we have a, a ten percent, fifteen percent in that budget for changes down the line, or would that be a, another? If we, if we did have to change any of the plans after the initial one?
So the ar- the architectural, the architect's role is to assess the building today, you know, the plant, the plumbing, the electrical, the layout of the, of the buildings, the classrooms, uh, the, you know, the roof to, uh, and so it's really not dependent on, um, you know, what the grade structure is necessarily. So they can evaluate whether, you know, two grades can go in there, three grades go in there, but it, it, it's really to assess the building itself, the quality of the plan. Um, so but in our, if, if we said three grades down the road, that's not gonna affect them, they're gonna study that nonetheless. So I, I'm not sure if I answered your question, uh.
You did enough. Yeah, that's fine. Yeah.
No, I, I mean, it, it, there's, they're gonna study the full range for that building. Um, so there, there shouldn't be any change coming, you know, we either have two or we have three grades in there. They're gonna study both.
Yeah, I, I mean, more so for the, like, uh, the electrical, water, that kind of stuff. Like, no matter what happens, if it's two or three, those plans wouldn't change.
If not, right.
That was my, okay, yeah, so no, no change of whatever else happens would affect those costs of, of the.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Uh, yeah, since the question feasibility, about how much the feasibility study costs?
Uh, this one is twenty-eight thousand.
Twenty-eight thousand, so the question for the ability to study now, because we're gonna do one, we would need to do one if our people drove through, would occur later.
Yeah, let me just, uh.
Because there is no money for that.
So this, this, this is the building assessment.
Yeah.
Uh, and this is, the, the price of this would be around a hundred and twenty thousand.
Okay, okay, sorry, I want to just clarify three points.
Okay.
Number one, I want to be certain that we would be able to withdraw the proposal at any time if we did not like it, correct? If we did not want to go forward, right?
Yes.
We changed our mind during the time. Second point, just because we submitted this year, it's not guaranteed that we'll get approved this year, right? It might still see next year or three years down the line, right?
That's right. There were, last year, there were a hundred and twenty-five applicants, was a handful of applicants that were selected.
No, I just want to make questions with, the other, the other last point is, if members of this committee do not support it, will that weaken our proposal?
The MSBA works for a strike community support, so if, uh, if there was a, you know, a split vote on the school committee, that would not help the signal strike. In my view, that's not what they want.
Okay, thank you.
Um, you know, we started jumping right in because we all know what MSBA is, and we just started talking about it, but I didn't realize that members of the public might not know what MSBA is or what we're actually applying for. So can you recap from the start for folks that, that might know, I just, we're so used to just, you know, knowing the lingo and that again.
That's what the, MSBA is the Mass School Building Authority. It is the authority vested Massachusetts with helping schools either build new buildings or renovating existing buildings. So essentially, one percent of the sales tax that everyone pays for, uh, in Massachusetts goes to the School Building Authority. And they then use the money, uh, to help districts across the state renovate or build new buildings.
Thanks, I just thought that might be helpful, yeah.
In terms of in the past, I think we've been around thirty-nine percent reimbursement, something like that.
Yeah, I think it will vary on the project. There's a lot of variance on the core renovations, so it's a, you know, that, that, that level may be more applicable to the accelerated repair program, which is the roof program for the windows, et cetera. On the core program, which is for a brand-new building or for renovation, it depends on the towns, the towns economics, uh, the type of renovation, whether it conforms to the guidelines that the MSBA has set up.
Right.
So they can vary, I, I, I just, I, I don't wanna, you know, they, it takes a year for the architects ourselves in the MSBA to, uh, come up with a reimbursement formula. So I'd be just, I will be careful about.
Okay.
Uh, giving a range at this point, because it can substantially vary. That, that, and I'll give you a prime example. Building a brand-new, uh, junior high school, uh, for example, instead of renovating Lawrence, you would not be able to build an auditorium with any funding. They would give you zero dollars of funding, uh, for that auditorium. So that would lower your reimbursement level when you think of the total cost of the building versus what they'll pay for. So that's an example of things that will change that reimbursement percentage.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, nothing else, it's good to know that, for people to know that it's not the entirety of the cost, it's, it's a significant amount, but it's not.
And a town, a family will get less than, you know, a, a major city that has different economics to it, so.
Do you have a question here?
Could I just get, you, did I get this back straight? One percent of our mass sales tax goes to this organization?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I had a quick question. Um, they, the, I know there's some intricacies with the reimbursement and whatnot, but does the MSBA give, I guess the question is, do they give less of a percentage for a new build versus a renovation, Paul? Or is the percentage about the same if it falls into, like, needs, like classrooms and that kind of stuff, not the extras?
So, so, uh, uh, let me answer the question rather than thinking about it in percentage terms. They give a dollar per square foot. So they give, uh, roughly, I think, it's around five hundred and fifty dollars, uh, per square foot for those part of the renovations that they accept in their plan, right, the reimbursement formula. So if you're building a new building, you know, a, 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 a new building can run anywhere from eight hundred to a thousand dollars a square foot. So by building a new building, they're giving essentially a lower percentage because they're capping their, uh, formula at five hundred and fifty dollars a square foot. Whereas renovating a building may be closer to five hundred and fifty dollars a square foot if you're renovating.
Okay.
So to our expense to build it new, they, their maximum amount they give is around five hundred and fifty dollars. And so if you're building new, you're gonna get less as a percentage of, 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 of the total cost of reimbursement.
The square foot reimbursement's the same, but less of a percentage because of the overall cost?
Right, because brand-new buildings typically cost much more per square foot than a renovation.
Alright, thanks.
So I put, um, having a discussion about this and also acting on it because I didn't know how many questions we were gonna have, I didn't know where everybody was at with what additional information they might need. So if anyone would like to hold our vote until the next meeting, we can do so, but is there, well, let me just start with that. Is there anyone that would like to sit and ponder and wait until our next meeting? Yeah.
So, correct me if, if I'm wrong, but following my colleague's, um, questioning, am I correct in assuming there's no downside nor risk for us to hold ahead of this? Is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Um, okay, so is there a motion to approve, oh, sorry.
I have a bold question.
You don't need to. So is there a motion to submit the letter of interest to MSBA for re- the renovation of Lawrence?
My group wants to do that.
I just.
Great, is there a second?
A second.
Uh, you guys can go over that.
I just like to move it along.
Any last discussion on it? Okay, it's a roll call. Mike, you wanna start us?
Yeah, Mike, Helen, yes.
Katrina?
No, no.
Augusta, yes. Terry, yours, yes.
Husky, yes.
Uh, lovely, yes.
Suzie, yes.
Well, yes, Welch also, yes, that passes unanimously. Thank you so much, and thank you guys for all the information. So when that application is, um, available, you can see what.
You got it, right?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Alright, um, more money talk, presentation on the fiscal year twenty-sixth budget, Paul.
About that?
No, you.
Weird.
Wow. Oh, don't let me share, you want to send it to me and I'll just work. I don't know.
Well, I, I can try yours.
Do you have, oh, okay, that's right, let's see how. Yeah, you don't like.
Do you?
No.
There's two people standing over there, there's actually chairs.
Would you like to sit?
You might as well.
Okay. Yeah, we've got some. Oh.
Alright.
Okay, so, um, we can, well, this is our, uh, annual budget presentation that, um, that we do several times for you.
Anyone want to turn around your face?
We're all gonna be staring right at your faces, if anyone wants to turn around. Okay, so you go to the next slide. Um, again, um, this is the budget presentation, just the overview of the budget, um, just so to explain, uh, the budget process and how we go back. Alright, so, um, we always look at our, um, our, uh, framework for student success and, you know, what are our goals for the district. Um, most importantly, we have to identify the student needs. Uh, so the budget is always built around, uh, our students and, and what those needs are. Um, related to that is, uh, the staffing needs, um, based on the student needs. And then, uh, we align the budget, uh, with those priorities. So, uh, basically, the budget is always built with the, the student mind. Um, so we, uh, then have to identify, um, and resolve the budget constraints, uh, which we will hear from Paul later on in the presentation. Um, and we have to look with a multi-year outlook, so it, it can't just be year to year, even though, uh, we only present one year at a time. Uh, know that we're always looking at multiple years, um, as, as we're looking at this. So, uh, priorities this year, I, I will say that, um, the budget is tight and, um, Paul will share more about that later, so, um, I'm not asking for anything, uh, new in the budget this year. Um, I'm sorry, once again, Terry, we keep hoping for our, uh, elementary, um, uh, world language, um, you know, uh, program to start, um, but.
I'm gonna have to teach it myself.
I would love that. Now, everyone heard that. Um, so, you know, so, you know, we often identify some additional things that we might be able to add. Um, but right now, with the, the way that, uh, with the budget constraints we're gonna hear, we are basically, we're staying the course. And, uh, so we're not asking for, so basically, we need to be physically responsible, um, you know, while considering what the students' needs are, um, that always comes first. Um, so we're gonna move on to the student enrollment. Um, this year, this, all of this data is based on October one, that is the data, the official data that we, uh, submit to, uh, DACY. And so our official, um, enrollment for grade, or for school, you can see, uh, and it was a total of, uh, twenty-nine, ten. Excellent. Um, so this is just a little bit about our staff. Um, the staffing is, um, uh, held pretty steady from last year, we had six seventy-seven overall, um, six seventy-five this year. You can see the different categories, um, of where the staffing is. The one thing that you'll see new, uh, this year is that, uh, staff assistants and health assistants have been added into, um, Unit C with our teaching assistants. So, um, changes in some of the numbers, but, um, uh, not, not actually new, just, just a shift in the, the third making. Um, like I always, um, you know, give a shout-out to our teachers and their educational levels. Uh, we have, um, experience, uh, first. Uh, you know, we have the majority from, um, year six, uh, and above. Um, although you will see our number is slightly up for higher years, one to five, so we're having some new teachers as well. Uh, and in the educational level, you can see, um, masters and masters plus, uh, the majority of our teachers, um, that's their educational level, so we're very proud of that.
Can you just say what masters plus is?
I'm sorry. Back, so masters, we, uh, we have a masters plus fifteen, masters plus thirty, masters plus sixty, forty-five, and then sixty, and then our doctorate levels. So it's, uh, the, just the amount of, uh, continued education beyond, um, the masters. Um, so the student populations, um, you can see here, we've been presenting this for, uh, several years. Uh, and you can see that it, uh, it varies under the economically disadvantaged. We have come down, um, slightly from forty-five point six percent last year to forty-one point two percent, um, back to the levels of FY twenty-two. And, uh, our multilingual learners continue to grow, as you can see, back in the time, uh, FY twenty was four point four. Um, last year it was six point nine, and this year it has risen again to seventeen percent, uh, population. And then our students with disabilities, um, continues to rise as well. Um, back in FY twenty, uh, it was eighteen point two. Last year, um, was our highest at twenty-three point two, and this year it, uh, continues to grow to twenty-four percent.
Just a little preference before I begin, Mike, um, just the, uh, on the revenue side, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on tonight. I think there's still a discussion with the town. Uh, I'll make a couple comments on that, uh, but as we commit to January, we did the presentation in January, we'll give you updates on the revenue side. If you have some preliminary figures in the budget, I just wanna say on, for our purposes, uh, you know, we expect no increase in the federal grants, uh, we have, uh, uh, expect some increase in the circuit grant. Uh, but overall funding, which, uh, from the grant side should remain the same. So purpose, really, I wanted to talk about tonight is some of the, uh, some of the key factors that are affecting, uh, the budget. And here's one of the, uh, you know, the points of, uh, why I was making earlier. You know, especially each population has continued to grow, even though, uh, enrollment is coming down. That means higher teachers, higher, you know, PAs, one to one aides, as well as higher levels of added district tuition and transportation costs. And when you combine that, you can see what are, you know, within the budget, this is one of the it's driving the budgets of every every school district in Massachusetts and quite frankly across the country. But you can see in two thousand and eighteen, we had eleven point eight nine four million dollars in expenditures for special education. And and in twenty twenty five, we we're estimating that that number will grow to eighteen million, one hundred and sixteen thousand. So that's just one of the realities that we we deal with as the especially populations. Essentially, it's been growing significantly over the past few years. And in particular, this is a you know, the added district tuition expense can vary dramatically from year to year based on individual student needs. And so let me just define what is added district tuition. Is that if a student has a specialty and that need can't be delivered here and educating that student here within the district, then we send that student to a a specialized school that can provide for the education of that child. And then we pay tuition based on that that school tuition. So this year, to give you an indication, we had initially budgeted two point eight million dollars for added district tuition. With the need to expect the students developing through, you know, the first quarter of this school, the first three months of the school. Down the year, that added district tuition level has gone from two point eight million up to three point five million dollars. So it's a significant increase from from where we estimated it. And these are essentially new students being sent to schools off temporarily off gate that has, you know, increased this need. So it's not something easily predicted. You know, we take the population at a different point in time, you know, project that for the next year. These adjustments made for students that are graduating. You know, but you may have students moving into a district, you may have a need for a student develop within the course of a year, et cetera. That that some that number suddenly increases. And that was the case of last month, I went from two point eight nine to three point five million. So this is a significant impact, not just on twenty six, but on this year. So here's the funding mechanism for that. So the circuit breaker is a state reimbursement formula that they share. You know, they pay for seventy five percent of the cost that is over roughly around a dollar a month, about fifty two thousand. So our circuit breaker for this year is six hundred and fifty three thousand. We have staff funding that takes some of that money from that circuit breaker, that specialized staffing. And then the two forty grant is eight hundred and fifty thousand that we use for added district tuition. Our tuition budget line is a million two seventy five. And then you get down to, as you remember, last April, we drew down the stabilization fund for eight hundred and twenty five thousand with the permission of the town. We used a hundred and eighty eight thousand of that money last year in past year's fiscal year. This year will be, we will use the entire remaining portion of that, which is the six hundred and thirty six thousand dollars. So that leaves us a shortfall of two hundred and twenty six thousand for this year. So and if you go into fiscal year twenty six, the projection based on the student population that we have today would be three million five. Luckily, again, very close to it. The circuit breaker month will increase to a million thirty six. The grant will is essentially unchanged at eight hundred and fifty thousand. And the tuition budget line will pass for an increase of a hundred thousand on this. There is room currently to draw down another two hundred and seventy five thousand in the remaining funds in our existing stabilization fund. But if we may actually have to do that this year, if these numbers continue into January, February. So this is, I just wanna point this out, this is a pressure point for the budget both this year and next year. They may require us to to again draw on that stabilization fund in April punish that stabilization in April at the April town meeting. So this is to be a heads up for that. And these numbers are very sizable. Alright, other budget realities for fiscal year twenty six. And these are the non-salary budget increases that we need to kind of. First of all, our budget busing expense is the expectation of transportation, good party transportation. Come with Lucini, that contract is out of business. We expect that we'll have multiple bids on it, but we're looking at potentially a five percent increase for the for the busing. There's also two hundred and sixty thousand dollars of leases for mini buses and vans that we use to transfer students. That we now need to move that onto the budget. So that's the total of three hundred and seventy thousand we see here. Added district tuition, I mentioned, it's gonna grow this commission line in the budget over the next few years. Put a hundred thousand dollars because that's what we think we could bear this year. The corresponding expense that goes along with students being educated outside of the district is that we need to transport those students. So our transportation costs might be an increase, we put a hundred and sixty two thousand dollars down here to cover that additional cost. Special ed contracted services, that's the therapeutic costs for the students out of district. Above the tuition at sixty eight thousand, additional one. School supplies, this is a relatively small increase in school supplies and software, et cetera. It's roughly fifty five thousand. And the utilities are are growing up. Our gas, natural gas pricing, just the two-year contract with the town, power options. Increase in that pricing will be fourteen percent over those two years. So that's built into that. So all totals, non-salary increases that have to be, were built into the budget that we're proposing is roughly eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars. It's a significant amount. So with that, you know, we'll be, we've had discussions in this town, we've had several meetings. Our expectation is to come back to you in January and give you the full set of the flip side of the the budget should look like.
So again, clarification, so the FY twenty six projection for total added district tuition is three million? Four hundred? How many students does that represent?
That'll represent the today's students, which will be roughly today, we have about forty four students out of district. Net of the those students that would be graduating. So I think there are six or seven that might be graduating next year. However, it does not take into account any new students that we may have during the course of the year. So I'm moving into the district, for example, and it's especially so it's it's based on the current population, net of those who might be graduating.
So let's just keep our forty four?
Yeah, that's typically.
Okay, and then of those forty four, how many, if you don't know off the top of your head, that's okay. Get back to me, but how many are going to day programs versus residential programs?
If if you have, off the top of my head, I'd have to get back to you.
Okay.
That's one of the things I just wanted, we won't be careful about, we don't go too far down on questions with you know, students.
Yeah, I I'm asking just because it puts into perspective the the significant impact that that population, that those those students, which we have to provide free and appropriate education for, but that's a significant portion of the budget. And there's little that we can do about it.
Yeah, that's true.
I just had a quick, just clarifying question. What's the difference between day and is it and residential, is that if a student is living like at the facility?
That's true.
That actually, I was wondering, those same questions, and I'm wondering if Sandy or someone could come in and just give us a little education more about what that is, where they go, what kind of needs they have, not to go into their privacy issue, of course, but.
It's like an overview.
Yeah, like when you take someone out of the district and you're transporting them, where are they going and what are they needing? And I just don't know anything like that.
Yeah.
I don't know what I'm getting. And I had a couple of questions about the mutual. So for the teachers with years of experience, and I was just wondering, for six to ten years of experience, we have a low number, and I was wondering if that's a retention issue? We have a lot of new new teachers and a lot of teachers have been here for more than eleven years. Is there any problem in those mid-years of their career that we're losing teachers, or is that not representative of a problem at all?
No, it's not. We have teachers that are covered instead. We're very fortunate that we have very few teachers that that lead. So cycles, retirement cycles, we'll track that more than even.
Okay. And then for economically disadvantaged, I was, I kind of was trying to figure out how, what we, how we classify economically disadvantaged. I'm assuming we use DACY's standard.
Yes. These are all DACY's.
Because they don't use free lunch anymore as a standard. So I was wondering, since it's increased so much, is that related to COVID? And since it's coming down this year a little bit, do we anticipate that the trend might continue to go down to pre-COVID levels? Or any idea about that?
These are the, they changed the the title, so economic disadvantage was called for a while, it's also low income. You know, so I I mean, that's that's our residence and whether they qualify or not.
Oh, no, I'm just wondering, as a as a district, we seem to have, we've increased in the amount of students who qualify. So I'm wondering if that, if anybody has any idea if that's directly correlated to COVID and whether it might come back down.
It's the thing that we had a shift in the what qualifications are.
There were, it was a few years back. I I don't remember what year.
I think it was twenty twenty one, Katrina, that if you see the big jump, the state had.
Changed the definition.
They changed the definition and guidelines as to who qualified for that.
Right, from twenty nine and a half to thirty three.
Yeah, there was kind of a a big jump around that time, and it was because the state had this fall by.
Was that in response to COVID?
I don't, I don't think it had anything to do with COVID.
I'm just curious.
So we've been seeing, so this is five years, but this trend goes past five years. So I think if we were to take this back ten years or even fifteen, we're gonna see a steady increase.
It's just that it happens to, it's just a snapshot.
Yeah, but it's weird because it happens to be the the years since COVID, so it it's hard to you don't have the same pers, we might wanna actually add more years for that. And normally five years would be plenty, but because we have the weird COVID outlier, it's hard to separate that from.
And they changed the qualifications right at the same moment.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, yeah.
And then kind of a similar question, I guess, about students with disabilities, it's just gone up. So, you know, seemingly dramatically in five-year span, and I was wondering if there was any more information about what kind of disabilities are being diagnosed, and is there a trend of, you know, are there more ADHD cases or oppositional client cases? Are there more behavioral disorders trending here in this increase? Is there any breakdown of this that would show, just out of interest? You know, are we getting an increases in a certain area, or is there no interesting data within that snapshot?
With that specific data, I really do not wanna make that comment without looking at.
Oh, no, no, no comment.
I can certainly follow up and and give you a report, but I'd rather pull the actual data before.
Okay. I'm just asking, kind of in light of East Town and the behavior issues in general, and the increase here, I was just curious.
I might suggest the same thing for these, for the students with disabilities and and hopefully just learn, so we go back a few more years. I mean, I know we haven't, I guess, we've seen the presentation. Is it always five years?
It's always five years, yeah.
But because of COVID, they give more pushback of it.
Maybe comparing it to some other schools, I'm sorry to make people do all this work, but I mean, in isolation, what does that say? I mean, I think if you wanna do a couple of the Cape schools or statewide or something, if this is gonna be a major presentation, but except I don't like to add forth a few of those.
One other question is, does MSBA take into account the number of students who are economically disadvantaged when they are awarding?
Yes, the dynamics, the demographics of the town of Brian.
So an increasing number of the time.
That's right, and that's one of, you know, so the, you know, more that population, higher the population, more more reimbursement.
In terms of budget realities, it's significant of non-budget salary budget increases. This is just an assumption, it could be five, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's this assumption, they could go over the eight hundred and thirty thousand.
That's right.
Okay.
I wouldn't make the assumption on the downside, but I would definitely say that.
Well, that's why I'm concerned about the upside, not the downside.
Any last question? Okay, alright, so we'll have another update at our January meeting when we know more about revenue. And and then I can't remember, is it the next meeting or not that we vote for?
Yes, yes. So two more, two more on budgets.
Oh, you're still on, Director? We have an update on food service funding, which I have to say. Oh, yeah.
Just briefly, this is the, just updating the food service, the level funding that we received. This is our payout for the food service through November, but let me caution you, we've not yet received our reimbursements for November. But we, if you look at the bottom of the pages. Uh, but we, if you look at the bottom of the pages, you see our sound balance for the food service account is one million three hundred and six. Uh, and to the far right, you can see our balance right now is a million fifty-five. You can increase that by about a hundred sixty thousand when we receive November reimbursement. So we're actually in very good shape, is complaining this. Uh, if you fit, if you look at August, for example, uh, the second from the bottom number, the total loss of around seventy thousand, that says we're restocking, you know, resupplying all the kitchens and so on. And there's also, uh, some capital expenditure for dishwashers, uh, ovens, refrigerators, et cetera, that goes in there. So, uh, the sub-distillation in the August numbers fall there, but the the point of this with the new staff, with the additional staff, with the uh, additional changes in the menu and so on, we're in very good shape for that food service. Uh, just so people have an idea, um, we roughly get, uh, around four dollars a student, just reimbursement for the federal government, uh, and state government, the state can be small. Um, our participation rate, uh, those students that are actually taking breakfast and taking, uh, lunch uh, has gone up significantly, and that's a huge ribbon to go that, uh, we had, Dr. Joseph and made the changes at the end of last year. Uh, to give you an idea, we've gone from roughly forty percent participation level. Our goal is to get to sixty percent, which is considered to be a very healthy number for a school district. We are right there, we're, uh, in levels of participation, so, um, we're, you know, so we're hoped to be at the sixty percent by the end of this year.
Can you say what those changes are like? What is, is it just the quality of food?
It's the the change in the food, the kids are more involved, um, you know, and, you know.
Yeah.
Being able to test, yeah, we have the, you know, the the har- the monthly harvest now.
Yeah.
Um, so there's, there's definitely a shift in the, in the, in the food, but we're, we're seeing that direct
That's right.
correlations out this year.
And we're, and making it more available for like breakfast and putting, uh, you know, putting it out there, saying walk in, they can grab and go uh, rather than, you know, deep order to your cafeteria.
Yeah, this month was, uh, it's carrots, I think I mentioned that when I was doing things, so we, we had, um, the carrot cake, um, which was different. I had the cake, it was quite delicious. And now we're having, um, the carrot curry over chicken and, uh, because Thursday, because I'm thinking, I'm, like, one of the stores.
Yeah, I had read reviews from several six and seven-year-olds at one hall yesterday about the cake.
Yeah, the cake, yeah.
They're like, oh, it's fine cake, that's a cake.
Oh, egg cake.
So they're gonna have hurried chicken on Thursday?
Um, I'm pretty sure it's, it's either tomorrow, it is Thursday, right? I thought it was Thursday, because it's on my calendar to go Thursday.
At Valentine High School.
Um.
At all the schools.
I don't, I mean, it's all the schools, it's not necessarily all the same day.
I'm more in there for lunch.
Yeah, okay. I'll let you know the schedule.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but no, I think there's, you know, it's just that, you know, we're introducing new, new items, um, uh, every, you know, trying every week has something new, but definitely the harvest of the month around, you know.
That's great.
Yeah.
All right, so I'm guessing that the revenue lines for the cafeteria revenue is just extras? Because everything is free, right? Lunch is free, so is this when people buy expensive things?
They go back and if if they buy a, a second portion or they buy.
Or they want two meals or, okay. Right.
And you said four dollars for student reimbursement from the state, that's for a day? Or, yeah.
Per meal.
Per meal.
Per meal.
Is that the state or the federal?
That's the state.
That's federal, yeah. We also get it from the state, right?
Yeah, but it's, it's state to pennies.
Okay.
Uh, the, the federal.
All the things, yeah, we'll take, we'll take all the things. Any other questions about lunches? This is great, it's so helpful to take these deep dives into the small pieces of the budget, I really appreciate it.
So will the federal government start deducting? Because are there eight states that do free lunch in the nation now? Is it, is it just eight states?
That do not give free lunch.
You know, that, that give free lunch.
Yes.
So the federal government's probably gonna take away money from those eight states, wouldn't you think?
Well, praying that they do.
Okay.
Well, there you go.
All right. Uh.
Paul's still on.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the floor. Paul.
Okay.
Well, you're gonna be here, we will make it worth the while.
These are, uh, so quick update in on our goal for action plan, which is, uh, goals that we set up a couple of months ago, uh, and, uh, and let me just, uh, highlight a couple of these, continue to grow, uh, opportunities to educate students on environmental stewardship and sustainable practices. Explore and improve new and existing strategies to reduce waste. Increase energy efficiencies through exploration of electric buses and opportunities for solar options. And final goal was, uh, improve healthy, uh, schools through partnership with Farm and Cell was to bring fresh nutritious food to the breakfast and lunch program and improve breed spaces at the school. So let me just, quick update, uh, you know, one of the things that we're doing environmentally, we just had carbon footprint, you heard me describe it, uh, the other week, um, it was at Norman School. When we that, uh, we've, uh, cut down on the occupied times at the school for when we heat the building up. Uh, and we've been able to shave several aisles at each school, uh, so that we don't bring the building from say sixty degrees to seventy degrees too early and waste the energy in doing that. Uh, so far with that, you know, cutting down several hours, we've actually, outside of the admin building, had no complaints. A few complaints with the admin building because the boiler actually broke. But, uh, but we had no, we haven't had any complaints, so that strategy is working. That could have a significant, uh, impact, a positive impact, uh, on us. The other, uh, item I want to mention here, our action plan is that we've engaged with power options and DEIC. Uh, they are the consultants that help us plan through how to get to a point of electrification of our fleet, so this would be a long-term plan. Uh, they now have the data on our fleet, internal fleet, uh, as well as the bus routes from, uh, Lucini. Uh, this is a consultant contract that is, doesn't cost us anything, part of the, uh, uh, the federal program, uh, by some infrastructure program, um, and it's paid for them, so they are consultants, we've hired them to do this work. Uh, so that's, that project has been launched, uh, and we're ready to go to the town on, in the April Town meeting. Uh, we had the language for what we would need to put forth the solar project. We'll probably need three schools, north, south, east, south, and, uh, the high school west, as, uh, schools for parking camps, uh, for solar, uh, parking camps. So we'll be ready for that opportunity once all the dynamics, uh, and, uh, and access to the, uh, the, you know, electrical, uh, electrical system is allowed, we'll be able to put these projects forth and have solar projects for our schools. North South is the top priority. Um, and and the last whole point was the healthy schools, partnering with Farm and Cell. But Laura mentioned, uh, that we had kale and carrots were the two vegetables that we had, they were sourced locally. Uh, kale was from the Prunmasit farm, uh, and the carrots were from Peachtree Circle.
Poria dog, I think.
Uh, actually, you're right, Poria dog, and I think Peachtree Circle is, uh, next month is gonna be apples.
Oh.
So, um, both of those were a big success, uh, so. This is beyond a fan joke.
Loving it.
Oh, it's good, it's, it's good. So, uh, will we need then to have, um, on our agenda, something for the warrant or whatever the issue is?
Yes.
So that's July, January is best, okay. Okay, okay, that's good. Any questions on goal four?
For the, just like, I'll just give a shout out to the food service, uh, to the whole group. They've done a phenomenal job to, to see those changes in participation and see the excitement in the menus. Uh, the, the staff, which, you know, you know, not, uh, uh, has really been working hard, really deserve a lot of credit for that.
It must be so satisfying for them to know that so many more kids are
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are enjoying lunch now that they're making it instead of defrosting it. Awesome, thank you. Thanks, Paul, all right, Henry, you ready?
My goodness, I'm ready.
Update us.
Absolutely, um, I have uh, see if that, did I work? How come that's not working?
I know, we've done someone's.
Did I not do that right?
I think it's
Yeah, it's mine, and I was hoping that I was. All right, so I'm gonna try that again, boom. All right. So, um, I would love to say that the, the three out of the four people that were sitting out here for the, uh, the Mass Maritime, uh, three of them, uh, were dealing with, uh, with me and diversity, and I gotta talk to Ms. Campbell about getting her daughter involved because, uh, all three, uh, two who went to, uh, did, Sheldon went and, and, uh, did, held a banner for the June team, uh, June team, uh, there this, uh, on this Sunday, as well as Dylan and Travis should have been there, but he, no, Travis, Lucas should have been there, but, uh, he had to work, but he's now a member of our, uh, students advisory. So those four students, I gotta work on Campbell, but those four students were fantastic, and I wanted to just make a shout out for them. Um, when we talk about making, uh, my vision is prom with a beloved, uh, community, I've always wanted to make sure that what are the barriers for keeping people from doing that? That's, that the DEI work is like, what is it that, what, what prevents people from excellence? And so that's what we're been doing, and I'm gonna just talk about three different, uh, things. Goal two, you did goal four, I'm goal two, I should've been first, but that's okay. So we'll talk about a little, a quick update in goal two. I have two members here of my, um, Promet Diversity Council, uh, Mr. Matt, I'm glad that you're here and you stayed, stayed with me, I'm so glad. And, uh, Mr. Baker is here as well as, uh, members of the council, and then, uh, we're all celebrating. So Promet Two Fifty, we'll be, we'll be talking about that as well. Uh, so when we did our audit, we found out that an issue that we had was that our schools, that means teachers, staff, parents, they basically said that our reporting, schools reported that code of conduct needs to be applied more fairly and equitable to all students. And so when we talked about how we're gonna do this, what we decided was that our system, that our system to address those things, we're not, we're not, um, we're not unified and they're not conforming. So what, with the update I've given you is that I've been working individually with, um, principals and assistant principal and actually collectively, and we're just talking about how we're gonna line it up, how we're gonna make sure that by the end of this year, we're ready to have a unified, uh, system so that in the future we can start looking at any kind of barriers. So that's, that's been going on, even today was a, a good, uh, session with, um, some elementary, uh, um, administrators. So that is just letting you know that we're, we're going forth on this. The council, um, which I'm pleased members from the, my council can speak up on this. We've always said our motto is to raise the value of diverse voices within, um, public schools, and we wanna make sure we're doing that. I, I love the reason that we're doing diverse, um, diverse voices is that, uh, we want all schools to reflect that, uh, students belong there, because we feel that belonging fosters achievement. I'm not doing this for, for, if I'm not doing it for achievement or excellence, uh, I'm wasting my time, but this is our, our goal. Is that we want high achievement for all students, we want to inspire excellence for all students, so, so that's the reason that we're doing this. And so our action plan for our council has been, uh, we want a pathway success program, which is, um, mentor, we'll talk about a little more, basically, our alumni is coming back and telling them their story of success, and that inspires our students to say, yes, I can do that. Um, and also we have a mentor, uh, mentor coming in and talking to students. And so we did a couple of things this year, and I, I couldn't believe, look at, look at Mr. Matt, you're up there. I kinda can't believe I had you guys already up there last time. So, uh, uh, one of our goal was, uh, to talk about, uh, providing diversity in a sense of, um, choice. And, um, and so what we did is we felt that we need to make sure that HBCUs are elevated so that, uh, students can have a good choice and do that. And by the way, any student can, uh, apply and go into it, uh, but we wanted to make sure that we have accreditation to our students and say, hey, this is, this is, this is an actual, um, opportunity for you. And so, uh, Travis, you came up, Mr. Matt, you came up and you talked to our kids. Last year, we had ten kids, this year we had twenty, and I, I, I'm hoping for more and more the next year. So we've seen that progress, uh, this year was a, a good time to do that. And not only did we talk about that, but then later, we actually said, all right, we talked about it. This year was so awesome that in our college fair in October, uh, we had, last year, zero. This year, we have five, uh, historically black college universities came in there, uh, they were, uh, there. And we see them as good mentors, possibly to talk to our kids that say, all right, if I'm gonna choose this school, um, we have a network of individuals that could talk to students and say, listen, I can help you with, uh, with your essay or help you with that. Uh, so we have this network of people that can help kids. It's another option, give an option to do, uh, to do excellence in areas there. Yes, I'm just, come on, we know we wanna speak, uh, this baker is, she's like, I don't wanna speak, but.
No, I've been trying, first of all.
Yes.
I need to correct for, for the record, I was a co-chair.
I tried to make her chair.
But I'm going to call it.
I wanted to be chair.
But one of the things that we, some, many of our kids of color are, are also financially struggling. So applying to colleges is very difficult. HBCUs have a program where you have one common app, it goes out to fifty-one different universities, I mean, the HBC pathway. So that was important for them to get this information. I've been trying to get HBCUs at the college fair for ten years, and thanks to the math, I mean, I'm just a chance meeting. And it happened, we were able to bring this to fruition this year, and we hope to continue it. We, we've got the guidance department on board with this, wonderful, we had a wonderful meeting during the lockdown. But got a lot of information shared with them, because one of the first things was related was, well, all of them are so far away. That's not absolutely true. We've got HBCUs in far north as, as, uh, Lincoln University, which is in, several, in Pennsylvania, in Delaware. They're not all South of Mason Dixon line, and I had to share that with an individual, let you know. Um, I, my own daughter got accepted to Spelman, she was not to go there, but she got accepted to Spelman.
But.
Um, she had a thing for it, she didn't want to be in Atlanta. But this representative, we have seven that accepted, but we only had five to show that day. Um, we had Tuskegee University, we had Morgan State, Claflin's, where the maps are from, um, we had We had Morgan State, Claflin's, where the maps are from. Um, we had this gentleman from Southern. So my cousin came, she's on tape and she, I didn't know until last year, she was from Lincoln, which is in Pennsylvania. So we're hoping to include more next year um and grow this. Also, I'm in touch with the United Negro College Fund who, if they don't early enough, they would like to join us next fall. So I, the earlier I can get a date, the sooner and the more we can do.
And and Morgan State is in Maryland, so.
Oh, yeah, Morgan's, yeah.
And Morgan, so so we have some contacts with with them. So that that's been very successful. Our next, uh what we've done last year, we've had these pathway success. And I I mentioned before, we haven't had a first one yet, but this week will be our first one. And what it is, is basically uh alumni comes back, uh alum, a diverse alumni comes back and says, hey, listen, let me give you a, let me give you my story. And we get to students writing, students hear their story and say, yeah, I can do this. You're you're from this area. I'm from this area. I'm a diverse student. You're a diverse uh alumni. And we can do it. So it's been very good. Who's this uh who's this week?
This weekend, we have the granddaughter of Emma Barrow, um Raquel Loves. And she, we also had her sister a couple of years before COVID. We have Michelle Malvinari, and she's a state rep in Virginia. So she she came in in one. Um, this week is Raquel. Raquel's an acupuncturist. So I'm, I'm gonna be here. But we also, we do this um um through Zoom for several people. Our very first one was in Tex- from Texas, and it was um um Jerry Palmer, who's an eighty-five graduate of Found it, who went to Morehouse and he went to um Howard. And he works for TV one, if you know, black entertainment television. Um, and then he turned around and decided after all of this, he wants to be a lawyer. So at the age of fifty, he decided to go to law school. And he shared that with the students. And he says, you can change your path anytime you want. It's just what you decide to do. And that was a Zoom. And we had, we had a full auditorium then. Um, and at the high, that was at the high school. We've done three now at Lawrence and this will be our fourth. And then we're gonna start back at the high school this coming um year. We're also bringing in the Valguena Twins. I don't know if any of you. They're gonna come and share for the, you know, Native American in their pathway and what they do, work that they do. Um, we've had uh Brianna Johnson, who graduated in twenty ten. Um, I can't believe she's in her thirties now. She was my former student in sixth grade. Okay, she, I've got to do a brother name. But she um shared the business world. She she's in the business world and and her pathway that way. And she was also um on on a Zoom call that she had a whole presentation because that's what she does. She does organis- organizing entertainment and corporate entertainment for her company. She works for Squarespace. And so when they wanna get somebody, they're like, she was at Red Sox game with twenty clients and her grandmother. But you know, that kind of, that kind of work. And so she explained that that was. Um, we had Christine Peanut, who didn't graduate from high school, but went through Found it High School until Lawrence. But um she works, she's the third in command at Portis Miss Porter School in Connecticut, which is, I don't know if you know, it's a, it's a very well-known um girl's school. And she's the kind who pick up the phone and call over and say, hey, you be here. Hey, Bill, who will be there. Um, she can give blood to the stone. She's the fundraiser. She she's in charge of her place. I, she drove me past one of her biggest, I've got my two billion dollar um building that she raised the money for, for their new um cafeteria wing. So we've had across the board, different, uh lots of different people. We're going to have Bill and Stephanie and right at the high school February.
February.
February. And Bill, of course, is a retired teacher. And and Stephanie now is at Lawrence, says an adjustment counselor. So we're trying, all different areas, all different pathways. But one of the things is to let kids know that you too can do this. And the one message that all of them seem to give us all is you need a good support system. Turn to the people that you trust. And if you've got a dream, it can be realized. It may not be the easiest path, but we'll help you get there.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Fantastic. Thank you.
And 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 so the the ask, and I want to make sure I get uh, Mr. Matt, you can add to it. The ask might be um if you know of anyone, uh alumni, diverse background, it's, you know, not uh, I would love to have them that come back and talk. And that'd be a a nice, it it's a nice uh situation. So that's an ask. Uh, so anything on the uh on your presentations and uh, you know, you did a mini presentation, even though you didn't have a pool, but just talking about you going into uh this sort of the black university, that was, that was actually a a nice little, this is what you could do too. Any any um, was that, was that pretty good or?
Um, nothing to really add other than um the date of the college fair at the high school coincided with an event that is held for HBCUs in Boston. So that was the reason why we could not get more participation. Cause there were about three schools that wanted to come down to Found it. But we're committed to that event on the same day, so they couldn't come down. So I don't know if something could be done. We'll talk as far as the plan, you know, for next year.
That's good.
But the bookending there, that'd be great, cause.
Be coming out early here. So that, we gotta work on that. We definitely work on that. So that's, you know, w- we're doing stuff. I'm so glad we have community partners. They're so helpful to me. Tell me what I'm going on. So I'm so glad for that. Uh, and then again, uh, we're celebrating, we are celebrating all the time. We want Found it to be fantastic. Uh, the Found it 250 is, you know, is a uh town uh committee says you need to lead all the celebrations. Uh, I'm the liaison in there. And they said, we can't have celebration without kids. And that, I love how they said, we can't have celebration without kids. And so they wanted to find out, what are ways that we can engage our kids, uh their stories, this fantastic stories that we can talk about kids being involved in uh there. And so uh this Sunday, I was not only looking at Juneteenth uh banner, but I was also uh Laurie can can verify, she was with me. I were also at the uh Found it uh 250 banner. And the kids held the banner. And that was kind of cool to say, this is the beginning. I don't think this is the only thing. We'll do other things, but let's start. Let's get the banner. Uh, that's incredible. I like to point out, oh, can you see it? There's a, if you haven't never seen the uh the the symbol we have here, there's a person rowing. This is a story we're gonna have to figure out. I'm gonna tell you right now, but we're gonna tell this story. This is a young elementary school age boy. And he's the Paul Revere of Found it. So what we're talking about, I want kids to know that story and say, hey, uh age doesn't matter. You're gonna fight for freedom. Let's do that. I feel like in in uh in Found it, we have people fighting for freedom like at all ages. And I want to have that happen. So that's gonna be a great story. Stay tuned. We'll get you some more. And that's, that's all about me. Thank you. Any questions?
Thanks, Henry.
I love it.
Terry, I I was glad you just mentioned Emma Barrows. She was a credible.
And Legacy.
Or a principal.
And Legacy, with her kids.
So the principal that was here, is that her husband?
Mr. Barrows, he's the principal of the T ticket elementary.
No, no, see, that was that was our dress spy.
No, no. Way back when this was in elementary school, my husband attended his school there. Um, the principal's name was Mr. Barrows. No, it, well, hers without the X on the end of it, Barrow. Oh, but we, we also have her live someplace. We can look it up. And I text her daughter all the time. Uh, Linda, Linda, uh, she just got.
Oh, that's true. She got married.
She, she, go ahead, say it. Um, I'm hoping to meet her. Um, I want to say one thing. Susan Agusta.
Yeah.
You were on my interview committee. When I first came to Found it and I'm happily with them. But thank, so we did that job.
Thank you. Thank you for your use of service. I'm sorry it took you ten years to get to where you are now, but I'm really glad. A lot of it is just
conversations and language and the the way that came up, it was very important. I ran into Mr. uh Matt's wife, Tina, at another event in Hyannis. And we were just sitting here chatting. And she said, I live in Found it. And I went, what? And so then she, then I didn't even, cause I had been retired. So I didn't even know she was at one point in town, uh Found it School employee. Um, cause she ran the school agency program and worked, coached it. But I didn't know them. So, cause now, now we're all in Hyannis. But so in her, what she was doing that day, we brought that to Found it. You know, trying to bring that, emulate that. And she, you're very helpful in Spel, because I got to meet these wonderful people.
Oh, I love it.
Yes, um, yeah, I just had a question. You know, in terms of kind of the equity audit, is this kind of based on evaluating the schools based on the support that's out there for all the students in terms of how they're treated? Is that what kind of the basis of the equity?
The equity audit was comprehensive.
It was comprehensive, many different things. It was the the surveys, the the different groups. And so they they brought them all together and said, this is one of the equity uh concerns. And we said, let's, let, that's a good one to address. So that's the one we address this this year.
Okay, okay. Um, and so I was just wondering if, so in terms of a unified system, so they were finding where things weren't unified across, was it across all the four elementary schools or between, oh, this kind of middle? And so, you know, were they also looking at, you know, in addition to race, kind of gender identities, sexual orientation, kind of uh mental, emotional, physical ability? Like, was, is that all part of the equity audit in terms of?
Yeah, okay. And and that's, and 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 be able to determine uh what barriers might be in that, you know, when we we deal with the the system of identifying um any kind of uh referrals. So we can say any any kind of bias is that way. So yeah, we are looking at this one. And at the end of the, whatever we do, we, our goal is that we, it's not predictable that we can determine, oh, this is, these are the people that suspended. I, that's what I want. Right now, it is predictable. But we want at the end of our, whatever we do, we uh go one and go go one and two, say that the place Found it is a belonging place. And we're gonna make sure that kids are supported in whatever manner they can be. So that's, that's part of diversity.
You have questions for Henry and team?
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you for coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent, update.
Thank you. Um, so I wanna um begin by thanking the town meeting members um for, um, I mean, it went on the blanket. So uh the support that we continue to get, um, you know, meeting after meeting, year after year, uh from the town is so important. And so as, you know, we're focused on our uh the renovation of Lawrence, and that's a major um ask. Um, we are paying attention to every single school and the needs. And that's what goes into the capital budget. And we'll continue to do that. Um, so that's extremely helpful. And so appreciate um that the town's supporting us. And one of the asks, just as a reminder um that you approved was the um hundred and fifty thousand dollars to redo the uh project adventure at the high school. Um, and we have um answer between the project adventure, which is the only school in the Cape, and one of the few across Massachusetts that has project adventure. Uh, I mean, it's, it's a really nice offer and the kids love it. It's um, you know, it's not only the the course that they have to take once, but there's a lot of electives uh in that course. And um you know, and and also put the PE department as a, since we're talking, I know tonight's a big, big event over there, but um it, the the PE department, we have a state of the art wellness center. And you know, it's just, we we have a lot of offerings at our high school. And I just um, but for the town to support not only all the maintenance issues um that we had across the district, but to um to be able to redo um a very popular um uh PE uh offering at the high school. Um, you know, it's thirty years old. It needed to be redone. Um, you know, safely and to be able to move forward. But anyway, thank you, town meeting members. Um, and of course, it always starts right here at the school committee members. So thank you. Appreciate that. Um, next, I want to um uh talk about um our safety coordinator. So Paul Stefanelli um has resigned. Um, he is moving uh south to warmer weather. Um, so we can't hold him back for that. But um, but uh he um so he's already, he's already moved. But before he left, um, we had a interviewing team. Paul Dart was a part of it and Paul Stefanelli and um and some others. And um we interviewed and we uh were able to hire a new safety coordinator um that just started um last week. And uh so uh Mike Harley is our new uh safety coordinator. Uh, he is a retired police chief from Wellfleet. Um, he also was recently the SRO uh at uh NOSA. Um, he um his experience, um specific experience, um extensive experience, I should say, in crisis management uh to mitigate risk, experience in investigations and um to be able to provide training. So we're very happy to have Mike Harley with us. Uh, so we were very fortunate. Um, well, Ms. Paul, Paul was a great addition to um the school district. Um, and we think that so Mike's gonna be an awesome addition as well.
Right. Well, Paul was part-time, wasn't he? Was this man full-time?
Part-time.
So I get to.
Um, a lot of that has to do with department.
No, I just, I just wanted to clarify.
No, yes, that's a good point. No, I have forgotten.
Yes, thank you so much for mentioning the wellness center at the high school, which is absolutely amazing. And the project adventure course, it's actually more than thirty years old. I know that because my freshman year. So um the project adventure of my freshman year was required by all freshmen. And um we had to take it in the fall and in the spring. And then through the years, it had since uh grown. And um you know, several years later, I can tell you, for example, my husband took it every single quarter humanly possible. Um, he loved it so much. And I know that there are, have been um, dare I say, a generation, I guess, of students that have completely loved it. So I love that there are, the opportunity is still there for students. I love that Coach Gray is really embracing this. Um, I love that uh we are not just updating it, but also expanding it. And um I'm I'm grateful for the land that we have back there. I'm grateful for the program. I'm grateful for the instructors that we have. So thank you for highlighting that. Um, Found it has a lot of things to offer. And um, that's a a big one. So thank you.
So at one point, the school committee visited it years ago, and a few brave souls.
So we'll let the younger ones in use this.
We have a field trip coming on. That sounds very fun.
It's scary to look at. Let them all put your foot on it.
It's awesome.
I didn't get a chance to read my sports section yet. What is the event tonight that you mentioned? There was some big event.
So tonight at the high school, uh the eighth graders, so as our student advisor had mentioned, um, the eighth grade students go and they have um you know, just a lot of the programs that they get to be, yeah, learn about as eighth graders.
I thought you were saying sports events.
No, okay, sorry. But I am getting ready to talk about sports. Um, so I don't know why I can't project, but I have this picture to project. But um this is Silas Wagner. So then I'll tell a story. But um, meet Silas. Okay, so he is a junior. Um, he is the cross country champion, division two champion uh this year. He um ran in the locker national championship qualification run. He uh made the top ten for all of uh New England. And he qualified for the national race in San Diego um on December fourteenth. So uh he is headed to San Diego to run. So um an excellent runner. Just have to give a shout. That is, that's just huge to to be the the state champ and 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 move on to the national. So. Awesome. That's great. Okay, so what are we? Um, I have um, the passes around. All right. So this is um, so this is really special. And uh next Tuesday night, and we do not have a school committee meeting. So next Tuesday night, um at um the gallery on Main, uh we have our high school uh AP literature and AP art uh studio art students. Uh, so they, it will be a reception. Um, if you can't make the reception, uh the, their work will be displayed for a while. But the reception is always nice because you get to talk to the students. But the reception is always nice because you get to talk to the students and they get to explain their, you know, creativity and how they get. So it's, it's a very special event. So I just wanted to give a shout out to that.
Are they, do you have phones? Can I?
Uh, actually, yes. Yeah, you want to accept, yeah.
So I've been on this trip many times and, um, I was on this trip this year. And so this trip was, I actually mentioned it at our last school meeting. It was, uh, it was AP Bio, AP English and AP Art. And, uh, they go and they look at, we went to the New York City Natural History Museum. We went to, uh, um, Broadway Play and Julia and, uh, walked through Times Square, et cetera. And the students, based on their experience and what class they're in, whether it's, uh, AP Bio, Art or English, they can either, um, write a poem or story, uh, do, uh, a piece of art or, uh, I believe, and I could be wrong on this, uh, a small project on, uh, old bio project. That was a new piece this year, so I'm not entirely, I'm looking forward to what, um, the students, um, present next week at the gallery. Because the bio portion is moving this year. But, um, it was very exciting. The kids were so engaged. It was a beautiful day in New York City. Um, they, they, the weather was gorgeous and I, the kids had so much fun. They were so. The kids had lots of questions. They were engaging. They were, you know, speaking to the docents. They were managing themselves. They're, I mean, excellent group of students, excellent instructors. I can't say enough about it. And if school committee members have not volunteered on any of these trips, you should, because they, again, they do F E F. And they do to the amazing instructors. And thanks for asking.
And, and F E F, um, supports us every year.
F E F, we are so glad to have them.
I was asking about the format, so I'm planning to drag three and six year olds along.
Yeah, oh, okay. So, um, and then just a reminder, this is, uh, our winter concerts. Um, so Morse Pond tomorrow night. Um, the all, uh, all four elementary schools, it's the all schools elementary concert is next Monday. Lawrence is Wednesday. Uh, and, uh, the high school is Thursday. So just a reminder, they're wonderful. Um, and just hope you can come.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Um, can I also say that, uh, I want to give a compliment to the Christmas parade? I shout out to, uh, Dr. Dore and, um, Miss Sosa for being in the parade, but the highlight for my family and Melissa. Oh, I did that scene. I thought, I thought we were singing. Somebody, it was, you were bundled up, but I thought you were singing. But I, the highlight for all of my family were the marching bands. They were great.
So, uh, thank you for mentioning that. And this year, um, I think it's been five years since, uh, Morse Pond is actually marched. And I don't know if you noticed the little, the small drums. So that these were, this is the first time they've, uh, marched, uh, in a parade. And we, um, these are the drums that we worked hard last year to get. And, uh, so that, um, they could actually, the drummers could actually march in the band. There was over a hundred kids, uh, at the Morse Pond. And it was, it was amazing. I was just my shout out. Um, but, you know, all, all, the other schools were always there, but it was nice to see, um, Morse Pond back into the parade. Yeah.
And we actually.
It was exciting.
You know, they, they keep marching too. So I know at least one, um, student that graduated, who was in the marching band at Falmouth High. Went to U S G M person was in the, the Thanksgiving.
In the Thanksgiving parade. Yeah, yeah.
It was great. You could actually, you could actually see them.
In the.
Trump them.
Yeah, it's right in the front.
Yep. So they keep marching long after the, the Morse Pond Christmas.
Uh, okay, great. Move on. Let's do some routine business. We have the minutes from November the twelfth. Um, and then November the eighteenth is the copy that had an edit and it was the one that was at your seat. So is there a motion to put the November twelfth minute?
I'll make a motion.
Melissa, is there a second?
One second.
Thanks, Terry. Any, um, any edits or? Great. Uh, it's a roll call vote. Mike?
Healan, yes.
Katrina, none. Yes.
Augusta, yes.
Medea, yes.
Will's keep, yes.
Those are you.
Who's are you?
Owen, yes.
And Will Jaws, so yes, that's unanimous. Thank you so much. And then for the, um, November twenty eighth, um, eighteen. That's a, I missed. Thank you. The one that are at our seat, the eighteenth. Is there a motion to those?
I have a motion.
Thanks, Melissa. And Terry, you want a second?
Sure.
Thank you. Is that on the eighteenth?
Um, I have one tiny edit that I don't want to share. I guess I didn't get into the print, but is it in the final? Second. The motion to chair, five chair, your two.
It's in there. You're right.
Oh, in the gray copy.
The one that was at our seat. All right, that's not the one that was in the package. Great. Any other? Great. Mike, you're first.
Healan, yes.
Augusta, yes.
Sure, yours, yes.
Will's keep, yes.
Oh, yes.
I'm staying open here.
Okay. Can I pass, um, with one extension?
Oh, my, yes, of course.
And name reports. Anybody have a report? Terry?
Okay, um, from Vips, I will say the student of the month is named Robert Simkins. And it will take me half an hour to tell you everything involved, but pass off to Robert Simkins. Awesome. And, um, last week, I went to a retirement party of Patty Malone. Patty Malone, I think is forty-four. It's forty plus years worked at, um, Falmouth. And so someone with that many years deserves some recognition. Guys are, and, um, the kids that she helped get their paperwork in. Um, you, everybody who has teenagers trying to get the college stuff, they need all artists. She would harass them more than they can. She really deserves, uh, a shout out.
Thank you. You have to have the article. Um, go to the website, because there's an article there, um, that Sarah Murphy.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You can get all the details in forty-three.
Forty-three?
Forty-four.
Forty, it was forty-four.
Amazing. Thank you. Any other, uh, community reports?
Just the, uh, I went to the tech meeting, the tech teach for learning. Um, we, in that meeting, we divided into two groups. One of them was discussing AI and I was not in that group. The two tech tool library was my discussion. Um, they were trying to create a crossover guide and a resource for students all the way from pre-play, kind of two years old, teachers, substitutes, TAs, parents. So that everyone can understand the tools we have and how to use them. Um, and so the, the three steps that they decided to do next was onboarding, um, making a one-page guide. So that everybody, you walk into the classroom, you can have a little printed guide for, I think, like five. They have like five programs that they were thinking would be the top ones, that it'd be good to have everybody to have access to. Um, and then ongoing education for teachers, maybe doing tech fights, which is something I guess they used to do. They would email it out, a little, um, summary of a lesson or description of how to use something. Or at a staff meeting, they were talking about having someone stand up and have a little presentation about how to use a tool and then five minutes for everyone to try it on their computer. Um, and also then adding, um, education about new tools and features for teachers, so they can get updated. The AI group decided they wanted to make a survey about, um, AI for teachers, so we can figure out what issues and concerns and questions the teachers have. Um, and I, for myself, I mean, I learned so much during meetings. I don't know about the tools that are in school. Um, so I always learn a lot, but, um, I was surprised to find out that the, well, someone told me at one of the meetings, um, that the TAs, the teachers assistants, don't have any formal training or onboarding before they're in the classroom. And so the, um, feeling of the person speaking to me was that they make mistakes, so they don't know how to use the tech tools. And maybe a kid doesn't want to do something and they'll say, I don't know how to use this or it's not working. And then the person is like, oh. Okay, so they were suggesting, um, maybe one thing we could do for them was to have them attend a tech meeting. And you could do a little training for them during the tech meetings. Um, so that's, it's a good meeting. Thank you.
We have our progress.
Well, there's a wellness committee being at Lawrence, but I came to the wrong site, because I don't read my emails that well. Although I want to remind everybody about the Wellness Fair at the high school in March. And you may have those things that happened.
Uh, we talked about, um, using the social media more, um, and, um, putting out, um, little clips about what we do for social emotional learning. Um, so it's all on the website. So we, we have it up. That's been one of the, the goals of the, and accomplished. It's on the website, but not necessarily where everyone goes to the website to read everything. But if we took every, you know, like little clip every so often and put it in the, in, and kind of give people back the website, that would help. And then the other thing around, um, the nutrition is being able to put out on our, um, social media, um, a picture of, you know, some of the meals and then, um, and then give a little clip about that. So those are two things we're gonna start increasing on social media to get the word out about what, what we're doing in this.
It'll help liken his kale recipe that he's looking for. That was such a good idea. I know, it is such a. We have Sharon.
You actually have that recipe. Um, so we are starting that, um, the, the chef's corner and we're getting all the recipes that she's creating.
Oh, great, yeah.
So, but we could have that recipe if anyone wants to, because it was very good.
Awesome.
Yes.
Chris?
Um, last Wednesday, we had a DEIB town advisory meeting. And as part of that, um, there was a presentation by Joe Pachico. Um, I believe he's with the Town Council of Bostock County Human Services Department. Um, and he gave a presentation on, um, a website that they set up, uh, called Network of Care, where organizations can, can join. And there's a vetting process. I think his department kind of vetted it. Um, anyone, you know, looking to offer any kind of support services, um, and such. And, um, yeah, I think it was more in the interest where the DEIB community was looking to be a part of it in terms of, um, a supportive organization. Um, but I figured it'd be a good opportunity just to mention that out there for people looking for support as well. Um, just, yeah, any, any kind of services, some, like there was a, a large, large list. So just wanted to mention that.
Um, negotiations is ongoing. Um, we have a meeting tomorrow. And the only other thing I, wait, isn't tomorrow? Oh, yeah, no, Thursday. I just don't have a date to make it this. Okay, great. Yeah, tomorrow is on Thursday.
We're going to, we're going to the Morse Pond concert tomorrow night.
Right.
Well, we're going to the first junior varsity hockey game tomorrow.
Um, and the only other thing I had was to make sure you, uh, scheduled your mid-cycle, uh, meeting. Sharon had sent out a list of times they heard for this. I have lots open still, so get your pick.
I couldn't open it. Remind me, I couldn't open it for some reason.
Okay, send your little, little picture. Kerry?
Get your pick if you're going quick.
Yeah, there you go. See, I'm a poet, I didn't know. All right, um, any last things? Okay, great. So, um, I'll make a motion to move into executive session with respect to strategy for lit.
But sorry, there must be a question or information.
Oh, sorry. Um, it's not on there. It's usually lumped together with reports.
Oh, okay. I was just that, um, person I'm forgetting his name, who has emailed us several times about the parking and the students driving and the buses. Can you remember his name, Terry? We just wrote back.
His name is Jeff, yeah.
Jeff, um, I was wondering if, if anyone could come back to a meeting with information about other districts that have, um, his emails about students part driving and parking at the school, especially in the buses and having empty buses. And Terry responded very well, but it may be curious if there are other districts, like you said, that have a paid park scheme for their high school students, um, to encourage using the buses. So I was wondering if anyone, you know, you'd be more about that.
Yeah, I used to do it, but we decided not to do it.
I mean, because having cars is such a privilege. It seems like, um, a segment of the conference.
So, well, then it was, okay, but I'm gonna just pause this there because we can't discuss it because it's not.
Of course.
But if somebody is requesting information. Yeah, I will follow up other questions for the, uh, back. For sure. Thank you. No problem. Okay. Uh, any last questions?
Yeah, I think at the conference, uh, it was mandated, then we have to have a, a, a seat for a bus service group.
Yeah, we just can't discuss it tonight because it's not on agenda. So we can bring it back another time. All right, so I make a motion to move into executive session with respect to strategy for litigation purpose. Three, with FBA units A, B, C and D, and to discuss strategy in regard, uh, to bargaining for FBA units A, B, C, D. Having these sessions in open session might have a detrimental effect on the school committee's litigation and bargaining positions. It's a, the school committee will not return to public session. Thank you all for coming. Let's discuss the second and it's a roll call.
Healan, yes.
Kevin, yes.
Will's keep, yes.
And, and yes, that passed unanimously. So we're in executive. Um, Mike, we're gonna jump off this link and send you, okay, by email.